Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals December 15, 2022 meeting. The time being seven o'clock PM. Alexander Terenzio requests a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use L5, to construct a detached 30-foot by 40-foot residential garage with a footprint of 1,200 square feet. The subject property is located at 83 Beet Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District. Is Mr. Terenzio here?
Yeah.
You want to come up? Are you Alec?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before I let you begin, I have a disclosure to make. This is a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest, which is required by General Laws, Chapter 268, Section 23B3. I'm a personal friend of one of the abutters to the subject property. I've talked with him. He has absolutely no position on the matter. He's neither opposed nor in favor of it. And taking that into account, I feel that I am able to sit on this matter without any conflict. So unless you have an issue, okay? No issue here? Okay. So as you can see, there are four of us here. That gentleman there, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, Ms. Mellon, and I are the regular members of the board. Mr. Yagan and Ms. Brew are associate members. All of us participate, but only the three regular members, he, me, and this young lady here, will be the ones who are vote, who are voting. And in order to approve your application, our vote must be unanimous. Okay? Go ahead. Tell us what you want to do, and we'll ask you some questions.
Should I press this? Oh, it's all set. So my plan is to build a 30-by-40-foot detached garage at 83 Beet Street. So what we did is we finished off both of the basement sides on the two units, 83 and 85. So now it's like two townhouses as opposed to a raised ranch. And we'd now like to use that garage as the basement storage, which we used at the property.
How high is the garage itself?
I can check on the plans. I know the interior height is going to be 12 feet. 512 pitch, and then, so let me see what that is.
Let me ask you this. Does it exceed 21 feet from ground to...
No, definitely not 21 feet.
Okay. And you're showing space for two vehicles, which would roughly be about 625 square feet, so roughly another 600 feet as storage area?
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
Okay. Is above the level where the vehicles would be parked, is there going to be a ceiling there?
No, yes. So it would be trusses. Do you know trusses?
So it's exposed, it's on attic space and the...
Right, right, yeah.
Exposed?
Yes, exposed, yeah.
Slab on grade, I presume?
Yep.
No basement, right?
No basement, yep.
Okay. And you're showing a bathroom, correct?
Yeah, but we're going to take that out as we were told it's, we're not allowed to have water connection.
Okay. Kim, Lorraine, Dave, Kurt, go ahead. Were there any questions?
I do have a few questions. So this is going to be visible from the street?
Yes.
Okay. And will you occupy the residence?
I'll be at 83 Beet Street, yes.
Okay, so you're...
I'm sorry, you will be?
Yes, I'll be living at 83, and then 85 will be a tenant.
Okay.
Okay. And there's two units that you said. Do you, if we were to approve this, do you have any intention of using this for any business use, commercial use?
No, no.
Okay. That is all I have for the moment.
Okay. Dave, any questions?
No. Quite a bit of storage space, right?
I heard storage space, that was all.
Sorry.
Dave, could you repeat that?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Slightly.
Can you turn up your volume?
Turn up my volume. Here we go. Great. How do I do that?
Just repeat the question. I guess not. Kurt, any questions?
That better?
Oh, wait. My battery's dead.
No.
If it's helpful on the line, we can hear him fine.
That better?
No.
It sounds kind of echoey.
How about now?
Oh, there you go.
That's better, Dave.
Okay, I figured it out. One more. How about that?
Yes. Any questions?
That's quite a bit of space for storage. What kind of things do you expect to store there?
So I've flipped five houses now, ranging from 1800s to 1900s. In every house I do, I keep as much lumber as I possibly can. So I have tons of 300-year-old lumber that I'd like to use eventually, you know, make some pieces of furniture for myself. But I have a lot of lumber that's all stored under tarps right now. I'd love to have in a garage.
So the lumber is used towards other construction, flipping houses?
Yeah, construction and then, you know, furniture pieces for myself, just miscellaneous, anything I can recycle it for.
So it's part of, and it is part of a business?
No, not like... So I'd say more of a hobby.
The furniture that you prepare?
Yeah. I haven't gotten to it yet, but eventually I'd like to make like a dining room table for my house and stuff like that.
So if you're going to be manufacturing furniture, you're probably going to need, what, room for equipment to manufacture it?
Well, I have that, yeah.
I mean, where is that now?
In my trailer, yeah. So everything is just in my trailer now.
Putting that in the garage?
Uh, yeah.
Does that run a single-phase or two-phase electric?
Single-phase, yeah. It's just the biggest is a table saw right now.
When you're flipping houses, you have employees?
Uh, no. Yes.
And do they go directly to the job, or do they come into you, or how's that all work?
What do you mean, do they come directly to me?
Well, where do they report in the morning?
Um, well, they just kind of, like, if they have their job, they go and do their job on whichever house we're on. Yeah, they don't really report to me. They kind of just have their job and do their job.
And they bring their own equipment directly to the job?
Yeah, they all have their own equipment.
Nothing further.
Kurt, any questions?
I presume the garage is going to be, you know, keeping in context with the house as far as style, color, that kind of thing.
Same vinyl setting, yep.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Lorraine?
So, quick question. Is this a single-family home that has been converted into two units?
At one point, yeah, like 30 years ago, they converted it.
30 years ago?
Yeah, before me, a long time before me. And we just, we made the two-family a lot more spacious. We used the basement.
So that's something that would be, that's like pre-existing, non-conforming?
That was a question that I asked Diana originally, and I think we said the house was constructed in 1968, and it was allowed as a two-family at that point.
I think it was 1980, but it was allowed as a two-family. Like, there's applications to the Board of Health for a two-family septic and everything. So however, they did it back then. It was allowed.
And at one time in the 1960s, probably even going into the 1970s, two-family homes were allowed in the R40.
Okay.
If you have any time you want to look at old zoning bylaw provisions, give Frank Spalina a call. The one he and I were looking at was only about 15 pages long.
Okay. Thank you.
The space in the garage that would be quote-unquote "used for storage" would be both for you and the other tenant?
And the other tenant, yeah.
Would you be dividing that space?
No, probably not.
It'd just be open?
Yeah, leave it open.
And there's no space whatsoever in the house, nothing in the attic?
There is space in the attic, but it's like probably three feet, so it's like a couple totes worth.
And I gather from what I've read and what you've said, there's nothing in the basement anymore, that's now living space?
Yeah, we have one closet right now that we're storing all the appliances while everything's being sanded, so.
Okay. Is there anybody who either has any questions or wants to be heard in this?
Yeah, I have one more question, Barney.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Why not build a storage shed for the slumber?
Storage shed?
Well, a shed.
I'd still like to have my truck and then the tenant's vehicles under a roof. And insulated.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is a smaller garage, vehicles, and, you know, a storage, a shed for the lumber, etc.
I'm just trying to optimize the space.
Okay. Nothing further.
And we do have a letter that's dated December 13th from Chris Corkery, who lives at 92 Beet Street. I'm going to read it. "I'm writing this because I and my attorney Nicholas Corkery can't attend this meeting regarding 83 Beet Street project. My attorney was going to write a response letter but has COVID. My concerns: This building isn't zoned for a 1,200-square-foot structure. 925 max, I think, is correct. There is already a huge water problem because we live in a flood zone, which we can't afford any extra runoff. I'm a commercial realtor who owns many buildings, and this sounds like it's going to be used that way, one or another. The size of the doors and how many will show a lot. Is this property going to be resold after all the property updates? There are many more concerns I wish to have. My attorney address when his health is better. I respectfully ask to have him look at the plans for this project when he would be allowed, thanks, Chris Corkery." 92 Beet Street also has the name of attorney Nicholas Corkery of 868 Turnpike Street in Canton. I spoke with Scott Shippey, the Building Commissioner, today, and he's not concerned about the garage doors. They're the same size of any garage doors. There's not, nothing excess in the way of, in the way of size. So does anybody have any other questions? I guess the big question I have is why do you need this much space?
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to optimize the space. Like, I didn't even realize the 625 was the max until obviously we went through the process, and they said, we got to go through the Board of Appeal. But that's just, you know, what we came up with for rough size of the lot that we have. Figured all of the setbacks work, let's make the biggest garage we can, you know?
Okay. So was anybody, any other questions?
I do not.
Dave, any other questions?
Uh, no.
To close the public portion?
I move we close the public portion of the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
We got to do a roll call vote. So Dave?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoa. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not sure how to flag anybody down.
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Joseph Bullier, I'm an abutter at 17 Hayden.
You know, I'm having trouble hearing this here.
Yeah, this is hard to hear.
17 Hayden.
17 Hayden.
Joseph Bullier, I'm an abutter at 17 Hayden Drive.
Can you try upping the volume?
I have, I actually, I could hear the other gentleman perfectly clear. I think in Rome, there might be a volume issue.
Now we can hear, so who are you and where you're from?
Sure, Joseph Bullier, I'm the abutter at 17 Hayden Drive. So we're just in the back of the property.
Go ahead.
So got a bit of concern, I think it was voiced by a few folks regarding the nature of the use for the proposed structure, concern over the size, and the applicant's, you know, stated business, right, is really flipping house, lots of wood, lots of furniture, lots of improvements, runs a, what effectively amounts to a construction crew of contractors, right, that may be on and off of the property, working out of such a structure, and, you know, really following approval of a structure of this size. Is there anything that really prevents that use of all of a sudden us living in what amounts to a, you know, a bit of a home flipping business really in our backyard, as opposed to, I think you said you flipped five houses in the last little bit here. That's a decent amount of volume, right, not really a hobby. And I guess there's just a bit of concern given the, you know, overall size and nature of kind of the neighborhood, right? It's not a industrial neighborhood at all, and saws, woodworking equipment, trucks, et cetera, make quite a bit of noise. And also have some concerns, and these are also from the neighbors to the side of me who unfortunately weren't able to make it as well, the Camillos, but, you know, there's also a good amount of land on the far side of the garage structure that has also been cleared straight to the property line. I think actually every tree on the property has pretty much been taken down at this point. But, you know, our concern is that might be used to store additional, you know, construction equipment, et cetera. You know, based on the applicant's, you know, business and the fact that, you know, storing a large amount of wood and everything else on the property, and just a lot of concern over the intended use.
Let me answer at least part of your concern. So when we, first of all, any garage that exceeds 625 square feet, as far as its footprint, requires a special permit from this board. And when we do approve requests of that nature, amongst the conditions that we impose are prohibitions as far as the garage being utilized for any business purpose, prohibitions against it being used for any residential purpose. So right there, there's a condition imposed that would address, you know, your concern. Now, obviously, if somebody were to, notwithstanding those conditions, utilize the property, use a lot of it as premises for some business purpose, and that came to the attention of a neighbor, you would have the opportunity to inform the Building Commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement officer, and he would then take enforcement action. So that there is a mechanism built in when we do render a decision in favor of a garage of this nature to, to address those concerns.
Okay, so that's built in, but really on a after-the-fact basis, so to speak. Okay.
Well, not, I wouldn't say it's after the fact, because we have to issue a written decision, and those conditions would be within the decision itself.
Okay, those are largely our concerns. I think I would echo also the flooding and making sure that the flood plan's been drawn up properly, because there's a lot of water coming off the hill there that could draw, you know, quite a bit of issue into some people's lawns if, obviously, the land's not graded out properly, but I'm not sure if that falls in here as well. But that's a good point that my neighbor at 92 Beet brought up there.
Are you directly in back of this property?
Directly in back, yeah.
Okay.
So it, to the back end, I'm also to the right, as you're facing Beach, we have a throughway that's about 10 or 15 feet wide running up the side of the property as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think we made the motion, I think we got the second. So Dave, this is to close the public portion.
No, he muted himself.
Yes.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
And me, yes. I just want to bring some things to the board's attention, because I went back and looked at other garage decisions that we've rendered, at least during the last six years. In 2020, we approved two. One was for longer, 960 square feet footprint, Odessa, 960 square foot footprint. In 2019, Howe, an 868 square foot footprint, O'Keefe, 962 footprint. In 2018, Johnson, 988, Yucatanis, 1080. We denied one in 2017 that was for 960 square feet. Part of that was because of the size, part of that was the materials that were being We did approve one in 2016 on Main Street for Brooks at 1,500 square feet, and Dave, Kim, and I were the individuals voting on that. However, that was a, almost a two-acre parcel of property. The garage was located fairly far back from the street, so was fairly unobtrusive from the street, or would be unobtrusive from the street. I don't think the garage was ever built. Also, we've got a garage here that's being proposed with a 1,200-square-foot footprint. The footprint of the existing house is 1,344, so we're only talking 124-foot difference. So my big concern right now is, is size. I would like it to be a little bit lower, but that's where I'm standing right now. So Dave, comments, thoughts, questions?
That's a very large garage, particularly compared to the lot size, as well as the size of the existing dwelling. So I would say that I would tend to be opposed to it at this point.
Kim?
And I also would add, you know, and this comes to us with opposition from three abutters. I guess they're all direct abutters, but three, three individuals opposed.
Kim?
I also think this is a little bit large, just looking back at, you know, the numbers that we have approved, generally, you know, 960, 962, 800 something or other. Yes, there was the 1,500, as you mentioned, from 16, but as you said, that was on two acres, so that is a different scenario. I am glad that the bathroom is not an issue. That certainly makes it easier to take a look at. And I understand what you're trying to do. I completely understand that. And when we're talking about any application that comes in front of us, we are looking at the particular application, but we're also looking at this as setting precedent, and what sort of a message this is sent to any future homeowner that, you know, comes before us. So we're sort of looking at it in two ways at the same time, just so you understand. This does seem very large. It seems a bit out of proportion with the residence.
Almost gives the appearance of two houses on the lot.
Right.
Kurt?
Nothing further, just echoing Kim's point, it's a, it's a, it's a large structure compared with the lot and the existing house.
Lorraine?
I agree with all that information. You know, I think Dave's idea of, you know, what about a storage, a separate, you know, storage section, you know, in a, in a separate building as an option for keeping the wooden there, you know, would be a way to get the garage size down to the more standard size for that area.
So we got two options, I think. I mean, you heard where our concerns are. We can obviously turn this down.
Yep.
If everybody is inclined, and you're inclined, to come back with a proposal on a smaller structure, we would continue the matter to give that opportunity.
Okay.
I think from my perspective, you know, again, looking at some of the other ones, you know, anything between 960 and say 990, 990, I think, would be 30 by 33.
Yep.
Anything in that range, I think I would be more inclined to the favor. So that, those are the options.
Okay.
We can say, if we say no, you're done for two years.
Right.
If you want, you know, time to reconsider, see if you can come up with something. And from my perspective, if you come up with something that isn't a 960 to 990, and again, notwithstanding the fact that we do have conditions that we impose, it's more in keeping with what we've approved in the past.
Makes sense.
Thoughts?
I agree.
I, I would still be concerned about the, the storage of the lumber.
I think that we can probably address that, you know, through conditions.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can, you know, certainly we'll listen to any proposal that he might have, but just be aware that I would be concerned about where this lumber's going.
Yeah, my, I think the concern that I would have with the lumber is it gives the appearance of you're running a business from that location.
I got you, yeah.
And again, this is supposed to be a residential garage, not a commercial garage.
Right.
Diana, do you have the...
I do.
I guess we're going to need to take a vote to continue this, right?
This is to extend the time within, you must render a decision. Is that the right one?
Yeah. What's the case number?
You have it.
17? Yeah. Diana, what would be the Janu, would January be enough time for you, do you think?
Yep, that'll work.
19th?
Yep, January 19th, 2023.
And what would be the February date?
February is, one, two, three, February 16th.
So what I'd like you to do, if you could sign this, and this would again be to continue the matter to the January date, and then we would extend to February, February date, the date in which we have to reach a decision. Okay. We have a motion to continue it to January 19th?
I move that we continue the application until January 19th.
Dave?
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And me, yes. So we'll see you on the 19th. And again, because it's going to be showing ideally a smaller garage, we'll need a certified plot plan, you know, to show that as well, okay?
Yep.
As well as whatever, you know, other plans you're going to come up with to show the construction of the garage itself.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Barney, can you mention that no, another notice won't go out?
Yep.
Okay, so just no January 19th?
Yeah.
For the neighbor guys, that was on Zoom, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Who are you? So you want a screen in your porch?
Yes.
I want you to talk to us a little bit about that.
Okay. Basically, we have a deck on the back of our home at Fort Carey Lane. I don't know if you have the... I don't know if you have the pictures, but we wanted to add a, simply a, not an all-season room, just a three-season screened-in porch, aluminum, all aluminum to match the existing white of the house. As part of our HOA covenants, we have to, me as trustee for the association has to have the votes of 10 people. We did receive those votes. We received 13 positive, none opposed. And the next step was to come before the ZBA with a proposal. I've also submitted, I don't know what Diana, I don't know what you gave them, but I also submitted a plan of the, the design and can answer any other questions you may have.
So just to bring to the board's attention, sections K1 and M2 of the comprehensive permit decision that we issued in 2015 prohibit any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or change to any residential unit that's constructed under authority of that permit unless authorized by the ZBA pursuant to the provisions of 760 CMR 56.0511. At our meeting on December 16, 2021, we approved amendments to the Wyman Village covenants that provided a protocol for changes to the exterior of residential units. That would include any solar panels that a resident wanted to put on, his or her house, any enclosure of the decks, and any other exterior alterations. Those protocols required, as Mr. DiNapoli indicated, first approval by the trustees
Correct.
and then to come to us for approval in accordance with the, the state regulations relative to comprehensive permits. And what we need to determine is whether the changes that are being proposed are substantial or insubstantial. And as you may recall, we've done that in the past relative to, to fencing at the Highland, Highland Ridge Development. This is the first time anybody's come, you know, before us relative to screening in a deck. But we've determined, again, in other matters, that changes that have been proposed are, are insubstantial. So we had the same issue to decide, you know, today whether the change that's being requested is substantial or insubstantial. If we determine that it's substantial, we have to have a public hearing on the matter.
Okay.
If we determine that it's insubstantial, we'll just write up a short decision, and you would be free to then proceed with the, the building commissioner. Okay? So any questions that anybody has?
Yeah.
I don't have any.
Dave, any questions?
Yeah, how many, how many units are there at the Wyman Village?
20.
20. So, I think in theory, you know, many other homeowners could also request the same sort of modification. And I wonder how that would look. I, I really think this is a substantial change request, so we can hear what the abuddas have to say. There are quite a few abuddas, if I remember right, about this sort of development or change.
Actually, let me ask Mr. DiNapoli a question. Not, not every home in that development has a deck, correct?
Everyone has a deck. Some are above ground, some are on ground.
Okay. Yours, again, is above ground?
Mine is above ground.
Okay.
The majority are above ground.
Majority above grounds? Okay. Dave, do you want to say anything further, or?
No, I, I just think, you know, the public should have a chance to be heard on it. I'm not so sure how I would feel about it if I was an abudda. You know, one is, one thing, but, you know, many of them is gonna change the whole appearance of the place. And I don't know if it's for the better or not, but it definitely will change what it looks like back there. And, you know, people judge a, a lot of, of, you know, how they feel about property next to them by what it looks like.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, of course.
Yes. As I mentioned before, 13 people voted in favor. All 20 residents got a copy of the proposal, including the plans you see that were submitted. There are three abuddas immediately around my property. All those three voted in favor. The only people that can see my unit voted in favor, so, you know, if you talk about bringing it in front of the, the group, I'm sure they would vote in favor of it once again, but I, that's just speculation.
Why did the abuddas get the vote on this?
It's a requirement of the procedure that, that Mr. Orvett mentioned that was approved last December. It required, I'm the trustee for the complex. The, the trustee needed to get 10 positive votes in order to move forward. Another resident can do that without getting the 10 positive votes. Another resident would have to get my approval, and then it would come to the ZBA.
Dave, the protocols that were put in place a year ago amended both the covenants and the declaration of trust, and they're almost identical to the provisions. And, and again, what they require was, or what they do require is, that there would be a favorable vote of the trustees and then a favorable vote, you know, from the ZBA. And as Mr. DiNapoli indicated, all the trustees have been contacted. All of the, all the residents have been contacted.
That's correct.
And they've received the requisite number of votes to authorize him, really, to, to do what he wants, but he has to go to us first, you know, be, before he can actually construct anything. So he's followed the protocol in accordance with the requisite documents of the Wyman Village Condominium Association, or Homeowners Association, I guess it would be.
Homeowners Trust.
All right, well, you know, I, I'm not trying to belabor it. I'm just, you know, just thinking about, you know, here's one, what if there's more and more, and, and then how, how does it look down the road? More and more of the same kind of approval.
I mean, technically, if one of his neighbors wants to do the same thing, it would be before us if the trustees would be voting in favor of it.
Exactly.
So each individual homeowner who was requesting to either put a solar panel up or to enclose a deck or a patio would need to obtain the approval internally and then come before us to determine whether that request is substantial or insubstantial.
Yeah. Well, like I say, I, I don't want to stand in the way of it. So if that's the, with the other two, I'm, I'm on board.
Okay. Kim, any questions?
No.
Lorraine?
No.
No. So, I guess the motion would be, from my perspective, I, I view this as insubstantial, the change that's being requested is insubstantial. So I think the motion would be to make a determination that the, that Mr. DiNapoli's request is, is insubstantial. And if we vote in favor of that, then he would need to, to follow through with the building commissioner.
Sure.
Have to close the hearing?
No, it's not a hearing, it's not a public hearing.
It's not, I'm sorry.
So I move to make the determination that the request is insubstantial.
Dave, do you want to second that?
I'd rather you do it.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather you do it.
Okay. I'll, I'll second that motion. Okay, all in favor? I gotta do a roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Barney? Yes, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do, and I'll probably do it tomorrow, is draft a short decision. We'll sign it. You'll have to file in the registry of deeds because you're modifying the comprehensive permit. We should be able to get that to you sometime, I would think, within the next week, certainly before Christmas.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a few minutes break, or what?
You can do the minutes.
Minutes, I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions on minutes from November 17?
No, they look good.
Okay, motion?
I move we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, do we want to take a few minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
Great, okay. Why don't we take five minutes, and then we'll start the next matter? This is an, we have the continued public hearing. 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the local initiative program pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area meeting income. Property situated at 119 Moore Street in the General Industrial District and is in the future Aquifer Area Overlay District. In addition to Kurt, Kim, Lorraine, and me here in Town Hall, Dave is on Zoom. Paige, are you there?
Ooh, she's there.
That's her?
No, that's him. But Paige is there.
Paige is there?
Yeah.
Okay. Judy Barrett, are you there?
Uh, yes, I'm here, Barney.
Okay, thank you. And Dylan O'Donnell, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see that Matt Brennan is with us in Town Hall, the town's health director. An update since the October 20 hearing session, receipt of additional materials, all of which are on the town website, an August 25, 2022 memorandum and related documentation from Gillan Associates responding to Environmental Partners July 25, 2022 traffic report comments, an October 25, 2022 email from Bill Casbara concerning environmental testing of the 119 Moore Street site, an October 31, 2022 email from Janet Sergeant Tracy concerning the testing issue, an undated letter from Kathy and Carl Vandenboem concerning the testing issue, and that letter was sent by email on November 3, 2022. November 15, 2022 memorandum from Carl and Kathy Vandenboem to this board and to the Board of Selectmen expressing numerous matters concerning the application. A November 16, 2022 letter from Environmental Partners containing a list of recommended conditions and mitigation measures associated with this matter. A November 18, 2022 inspection log from Matthew Brennan, the Town of Foxborough Director of Public Health. A November 28, 2002 memorandum prepared by Paige Duncan, setting forth the conditions and mitigation measures that the planning board typically imposes with respect to subdivision proposals, approvals. A revised list of requested waivers that was forwarded by email from Bill Casbara on December 5, 2022. A December 13, 2022 letter from Nangle Consulting concerning the environmental testing results. And I will comment briefly on some of those communications, but what I would like right now would be a motion to enter each of these items into the record and waive their reading.
I move that we enter these into the record and yet waive the reading.
Dave, will you second that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So some comments concerning these communications. The Gillan Associates August 25 memorandum was received in late August and should have been added to the website and then entered into the record at our September 29 hearing. The fact that it was not was due to an oversight for which I take full responsibility. Environmental Partners did respond to the memorandum by letter dated September 20, 2022, and that letter was placed on the website and entered into the record at the September 29 hearing. I have three brief comments concerning the November 15 letter from the Vandenboems, and these comments are mine. They do not in any manner speak for the Board of Selectmen. I don't have authority to, to do that. First, your request that the applicant be required to, quote, "provide a complete application" refers to the application that was requesting a project eligibility letter, and that application was submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. It's not our application. Our requirements for a complete application were satisfied, and that's the reason we have conducted a hearing for the past six months. If you have an issue with the application that was submitted to DHCD, you need to address it with them. It's not our concern, and it's not our issue. Second, the board has fully complied with the requirements of Chapter 40B, Section 21. We're required by regulation to inform other town boards, committees, departments, and officials of a comprehensive permit application within seven days of the date on which it has been filed and to request their participation in this matter. The application was filed on June 10. We complied with our applic-, our obligation on June 13. Diana subsequently contacted those who did not timely respond. The various communications from town boards, committees, departments, and officials that have been entered into the record did not appear on their own. They were in response to our communication. Third, each of us has read this letter. As we proceed to deliberate on the application, we will accord your comments and questions the consideration that we believe to be warranted. The November 16 letter from Environmental Partners that sets forth recommended conditions and mitigation measures was suggested by Judy Barrett and subsequently requested by me. I requested Paige Duncan's memorandum concerning conditions that the planning board typically imposes for subdivision matters. These requests and the conditions and mitigation measures that have been recommended in response should not be taken to mean that this board has decided to approve the comprehensive permit. No such determination has been made, and no determination whether to approve or deny the permit will be made until we have the opportunity to discuss that issue. That will occur in an open meeting. The conditions and mitigation member, measures in these two documents provide context to the proposed development. It's information that will best allow each of us to decide whether the application can be approved or should be denied. We may individually and collectively determine that these and additional conditions and mitigation measures do not satisfy us that the requested comprehensive permit would result in a healthy, safe, and desirable residential location. Conversely, such conditions, whether accepted by us in whole or in part, and whether modified after receiving public comments prior to the close of the hearing, may provide the assurances that we need in order to approve the permit. And finally, though we have entered the revised list of waivers into the record, that also does not mean that those exemptions from local regulations have been accepted by this board. We will consider the requested waivers as part of our deliberation concerning the application. We've received three invoices from Environmental Partners that we need to approve. One invoice was for the period July 30 to August 26 in the amount of $2,403.75. Second was for the period of August 27 to September 30 in the amount of $6,290.25. And the third was for the period October 1 to October 28 in the amount of $1,357.50. What I need is a motion to approve the payment for the amounts that set forth in those invoices.
I move to approve said amounts.
Dave, second it?
Second. Second.
Uh, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Also want to acknowledge the receipt of an additional payment by the applicant in the amount of $5,000 into the escrow account. Thank you very much. I'm hoping that that amount plus what is all- I'm hoping that that amount plus what is already in the account will be hopefully more than we need as we proceed. What I want to spend most of tonight on is the testing results, testing report, and I guess I would pass things over to you, correct?
Correct.
Easy for you to be over there?
Whatever, doesn't matter.
I'm just thinking of, you know, facing the public because of any questions you might receive, whatever's easy for you.
This is fine, a lot of people here. We, so, we went out and did put some test borings, monitoring wells in. You may recall, as part of our Phase One, we had done some preliminary assessment around the garage. We had put in test pits. So when we went out there, we were focusing on the concerns about offsite issues and migration of contaminants on the property. We went out and put, we got four borings in, we completed two of those as wells.
Hang on. You need to speak into the mic.
So we put in four borings, we completed two of those as wells, well up here in the corner of the property, and there's a well down here in the lower left-hand corner of the site. Very difficult drilling conditions out there. We kind of were focusing on trying to get a read on these offsite, the known offsite release conditions, which are up here and then this site over here. We, we didn't see any indications of film in the borings we put in. We screened in the field for total volatilator compounds. We didn't detect any significant, we get trace levels, but we typically do. We, when we went back, we, so soils, we collected soil samples and screened for metals, petroleum hydrocarbons, and VOCs in different locations. The, we looked at VOCs, the soil water, groundwater interface up at NC one and NC three, we were looking for things migrating onto the property, and then we looked at a number of them for metals and petroleum hydrocarbons. Soil analysis, we got no VOCs in soils, which is consistent with our field data and what we were observing. Metals, we got trace levels of metals, all well below the applicable standards, and we got trace levels of petroleum hydrocarbons at one location, but again, quarters and ninety below the applicable standards. So then we sampled groundwater at these two wells, NC one and NC four, and we sampled for VOCs, petroleum hydrocarbons, and dissolved metals. We detected trace levels of metals and trace levels of acetone in both wells, all well below the applicable standard. So we didn't find anything that triggered any release notification thresholds. We compared them to the most conservative soil and groundwater standards for residential or for drinking water, and we didn't exceed any of those thresholds. So based on that, we concluded that there was no need to report, and we didn't think there was need for any further assessment. Again, we had done, our focus when we looked at this property was the garage because there was an oil tank back there. We did ground penetrating radar, we did electromagnetic survey, then we came and put test pits around there. There was also a floor drain in the garage. We went in the garage, we drove a sample into the floor drain, and we submitted samples for lab analysis, none of that. We had no issues with that, didn't exceed any of the reportable standards. So that's essentially what we found.
Can I ask one question? You said the drilling conditions were difficult. Why were they difficult?
So, so it's all till out there. You get down to about five feet and you get into a lot of stone and cobbles, and sometimes you can drive through that stuff, and sometimes you can't. We, we drove pretty hard and couldn't get, so we had to get down to be able to put a well in. We just couldn't, we were, we were damaging equipment trying to drive it down. So we actually, in the middle of the day, we, so now when you have a problem like that, you got to sort of prioritize your resources because we're trying to get as much data as we can. In the middle of the day, we shifted drilling approaches. We actually had them go get different equipment, and we switched, and we auger through, and that was actually up at NC one, we couldn't drive a well in, but we were able to auger down. Down at NC four, we couldn't auger through. So it's kind of a hit or miss thing. It's actually a different drilling technique. We would go out there if we had to do more out there, a little more aggressive and a bigger piece of equipment. You know, we're also going through the woods. It's hard to sort of, we, we were trying to find the right piece of equipment to do this. But, so that was, it was, it's basically till. It's tough, tough to drill through, and, and you can get, you can, with a geoprobe, you can get through that, but you got to sit on it for a long time, and now you're eating into your day, and you're starting to damage equipment. Some, we actually, one sample, I think at NC two, we actually couldn't get the sample out of the tube because it was, we'd been pounding so hard. So we found that everywhere. And the thing is, is, someone dug a bunch of test pits out here, you can see them all over the place, and you see that, you see that, the cobbles and the stone in every one of those test pits. So it's pervasive throughout the whole property.
Thank you.
Why did you choose those locations as opposed to others?
So, we, you know, initially, we had, we did have a sort of a broader scope, but, you know, we could only get so much done in a day. So those locations, I know there were concerns about a plume of something moving onto the property. There's also quite a bit of debris over here that's on the town's property, and then, you know, this is the, the pits back here, people concerned about, and, and this is a listed disposal site, this is Summit Castings, which has got petroleum released there, it's a casting site. So that's why we, so we focused on those because this has given us a read of what's coming through. If there was a massive plume of VOCs coming through, we would have detected in soil and groundwater there. And we did do some superficial sampling for metals because of the foundry, and I know when EPA was doing their research or their assessment on this, they found some elevated levels of metals, and they screened that whole area, so. But, but that was the focus. We also, because we had done work in here, we were pretty comfortable, why, I think we had four test pits around the garage, and then, again, there are test pits at various locations in the property. You know, we were trying to prioritize addressing those offsite concerns because, you know, that is the, again, historically, we didn't see anything other than, you know, we, in our Phase One report, we identified there were, we saw solid waste at various locations and remnants of the former, it was agriculture, the owner had some, some agriculture going on over there, so there were structures and things like that. But that was why we focused on those, on those areas.
Kim?
No, I did have a question, but I, it's gone.
Got it.
Hopefully it comes back.
I'll try and answer it.
Yes, that's probably it.
Lorraine, any questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Are there any else?
No.
Dave, any questions?
No.
Paige and Judy, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to allow the public to ask questions, but we're not, we're not there yet. Molly Cody was not able to join us, but she did send an email. Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Okay, she did send an email this afternoon, and what I'd like is for one of my colleagues to, to read it, and then we'll take a motion to enter it into the record.
I can read it, yes, I can.
Do, you have copies back there? Do we make any others?
I have a, I have a few.
Okay.
Okay, so this was from Molly Cody, dated today. She sent it this afternoon. Good afternoon. I have conducted a cursory review of the subsurface assessment program document prepared by Nangle Consulting Associates, Inc., regarding one one nine, the Moore Street property. In short, they advanced four soil borings, completed two as two-inch groundwater monitoring wells, witnessed by the Foxborough Director of Public Health. Field screening of soil samples was conducted at the time the borings were advanced. Fairly shallow refusal was encountered. The total depths of the borings ranged from five to fifteen feet. Trace levels, zero point one to zero point three parts per million by volume of volatile organic compounds, VOCs, were detected in the soil samples. The fieldwork and sampling methods were consistent with standard practice for this type of investigation. Five soil samples from various depths in the borings were submitted for laboratory analysis as follows. And then it has locations, you know, NC one, S one and S two, the depth was zero to five feet, and the analysis was for MCP fourteen metals. NC dash one, S five, depth of eight to ten feet, analysis for VOCs, EPH with target PAHs. NC two, S one, depth of zero to two point five, analysis MCP fourteen metals. NC three, S three, depths five to six feet, analysis for VOCs. NC four, S one, depths of zero to two feet, analysis for MCP fourteen metals. NC four, S three, depth four to six feet, analysis for VOCs, EPH with target PAHs. Two groundwater samples were collected and submitted for laboratory analysis as follows. NC one, VOCs and dissolved MCP fourteen metals. NC four, VOCs and dissolved MCP fourteen metals, extractable petroleum hydrocarbons, EPH, with targets, polycyclic, boy, aromatic hydrocarbon, PAH carbons. Laboratory results were compared to the reportable concentrations for soil in a residential setting, RCS one, and groundwater concentrations applicable to drinking water, GW one. Soil, two EPH constituents were detected in a sample collected from the boring identified as NC four at the depth of four to six feet. Metals were detected in the samples analyzed for MCP fourteen metals. None of the detections listed above were in exceedance of the applicable reportable concentrations. Groundwater, barium was the only metal detected in two groundwater samples analyzed for metals. EPH constituents were not detected. Acetone was the only VOC detected below the applicable reportable concentration. Based on this very preliminary review, a condition requiring reporting to Mass. DEP was not identified. Limitations, suggestions. This was a very limited assessment, particularly for a six-acre property. Soil conditions can vary greatly from one boring location to another on a property. One recommendation would be to ask that they retain an environmental professional to perform visual observations of the soil and screen for VOCs during the excavation of the proposed building foundations/slabs. If any obvious staining, odors, or elevated PID readings are observed, it would be prudent for them to submit soil samples for analysis. Please let me know if you have any questions. If questions arise during their hearing, I can try to answer them tomorrow. Molly.
So, thank you. A motion to enter that into the record, this email to the record?
I move we enter Molly's email into the record.
Dave, second it?
Second.
Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. I did speak with Molly this afternoon, and again, she was unable to, to come tonight. She did indicate that if we had any questions for her, that we would, you know, just pass them on. The one question that I have for her, I can probably ask, ask you. Knowing what is at the Summit Casting location, if you had, what would you have expected as far as contaminants to be on this property if, if they had been on, if you had found them on this property?
From the Summit Casting site?
Yeah.
You know, so metals and petroleum hydrocarbons, they also had some low levels of chlorinated solvents on that, on that site. I didn't really expect to find them because I think we're upgrading of those locations, but, but you never know because, you know, you could have atmospheric deposition of metals, sometimes you get that. You know, that, those are, those are the contaminants on that site, is metals, petroleum hydrocarbons, which are number six oil, that doesn't really move. You know, there's a hydraulic condition inside, but that's not going to move in those soils very far. And, and again, VOCs, they have low levels of VOCs.
Okay. Matt, are you ready to answer some questions?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, probably over here.
Where you can sit there.
So Matt Brennan is the town's director of health, and he volunteered to be on site at the testing, was there at least for the first day you were there.
We were only there one day. Well, right, you weren't there when we were sampling the wells, I guess.
So I've, I've had some conversations with Matt, and I'd like to not just ask him questions relative to the information before us now, but I really want to go back to one of the questions that you and I had discussed previously. And let me just preface it by saying, Matt is not a licensed site professional, but my understanding is you've previously worked for a math, for a licensed site professional, and you've been in the field, you've done pretty much everything that an LSP would do except certify a report.
Correct. So before I was in public health, I was a geologist, and I would follow the drill rigs, and I would be in the field taking environmental samples, including groundwater soils, and submitting them, just like the LSP would. So I have a rough idea of, you know, what they'd be looking for in the contaminants and what to look for in the field if you were going to find contamination there.
So I was certainly satisfied that Matt would be on site at the time of testing and very satisfied that he's here tonight to answer a couple of questions. But one of the things, Matt, that you and I have talked about was that even if there were a need to report that there were contaminants to DEP, that remediation measures often would be, would be acceptable. And I wonder if you'd just give us a little insight, the types of remediation measures that one might utilize?
Correct. So, you know, if you own a contaminated piece of property, it doesn't mean that there's nothing that you can do with it. The MCP is a set of standards that you would have to meet in order to build there. So we have other properties in town that, you know, are polluted. However, with certain excavations, with subsurface sort of systems to, to take away the vapor and vapor systems, you're allowed to, you know, build or do something on that property. Now, this property is nothing like that. The, you know, the soils are there, they showed no signs of visual contamination, odor, or smells, so that it wouldn't be appropriate for this site, but, you know, as long as they're compliant with the MCP, there's no, you know, there would be no issues with building there.
So based on the results that it came back, you don't see any, any hazard, any health hazard to?
No, no. So, I mean, the soil and the groundwater, both standards came back below residential standards, which means no further work would have to be done in order to meet those standards. You know, unless something came up during excavation, during, where there was something found that's unknown, that could change things. But with the information that they have provided, it appears to be clean.
So Molly's recommendation of, of asking that they retain an environmental professional to perform visual observations of the soil and screen for VOCs during the excavation of the proposed building foundation slabs. When I spoke with her today, she was suggesting that as a condition if we were to, to approve the permit. Would you say that would be a reasonable and prudent measure?
Absolutely. Just when someone, if they, someone would be notified when they're going to build foundations, things like that, clear the earth in order to take a look at the soils, and again, look for spots that may have been missed, you know, you may be able to find something that, you know, wouldn't come to light during their, what we did on the, or what they did on the site.
Questions? Kim?
How did you, what is your thought about the, the placement of the testing sites?
So I thought it was, it was spelled out in the report very nicely. You know, it wasn't a complete look at the property, it was looking for contamination offsite that may have come on to the property. So the borings were set in a manner that would be on the property line that way if there was something coming on to the property, leaching on to the property, that they would be aware of. But obviously, if you wanted to get a, you know, a whole look, and, and I'm not privy to all the data, I'm just, I'm just going by the borings. I didn't see I didn't see the test pits or anything else, so if there was more data, I, you know, that may change my mind. But from what I see, it's limited.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Larry, any questions?
No, thank you.
Kurt?
No.
David, any questions?
No, but I would just like to comment that I appreciate the, putting another set of eyes on this and the assistance of the Board of Health.
You're welcome.
Don't go away. Maybe Paige and Judy have questions. Paige, Judy, any questions?
None here.
Thank you, Barney.
Okay. Matt, thank you very much. Before I open to the public with questions, anything else for Mr. Parker?
Not at this moment, thank you.
Go ahead. Would it be easier again? Are you going to direct this to Mr. Parker, or?
Maybe I could come to the podium and?
Yeah.
Drew Hoyt, nine, We Met Lane. First, I want to thank the applicant and the board. I know I was the one who was beating the drum most heavily on this issue. And, you know, until the sampling was done, it was a complete unknown and a real concern. I think these sampling results, you know, are obviously very reassuring, hopefully. I mean, I know they are to me and presumably to the board as well and future residents. So, I appreciate, I appreciate that, you know, that what wasn't originally intended to be done was done. So, thank you for that. A question I had just as I was going through the report, it's, one thing that was noted by the lab was that the, one of the samples, the deep sample at NC1, NC1S5, took a couple of extra days to get to the lab. Can you just explain that?
Sure. How, was actually one sample, one sample was, it was just left in the, so lab comes and picks up from our office, and the person handing them off didn't, left a sample in the fridge. So, when lab got it, they go through, they go through the chain and they see, and it didn't match what they brought in. So, we sent it under another chain of custody. I think there's two chain of custodies, I think we sent it in. It went in the next day or something, I think. Still within whole time, it was all, the analysis was, whole time was kept in the fridge.
Right. I mean, as you can imagine, I went, I went through it trying to find any reason to find fault with it, and that's what I came up with, so. And you've explained it, so. But the other thing, reading your report in conjunction with Mr. Brennan's report, Mr. Brennan, I didn't know you were here in Foxborough. Now, I remember dealing with you in Weymouth. I don't even remember me, but glad that you're here. The waste on town property that's very close to the border of the development property just, it just doesn't seem to me that we should be talking about this development as being a, you know, a gateway to great conservation land where children should go frolic and play when, in fact, you know, they're going to walk 10 feet off the property line and, you know, go slice their hand open on a barrel or fall into a, fall into a well or, you know, there are hazards there. Real hazards. Not necessarily, you know, contamination type hazards, but physical hazards to the young children that would be running around back there. I just think it's a terrible idea to, and I know in the project presentation, this was talked about, you know, we're going to have paths, they're going to go out into the woods and play and enjoy nature, et cetera. It's just not, that's just not what it is in that area by, by NC1. It's a hazardous area. Town, I mean, obviously, the town ought to go take care of it. But assuming that's not going to happen anytime soon, because it hasn't happened yet, we should be doing the opposite of encouraging children to go play back there. We should be preventing them from going back there. There should be a fence there, like a permanent stockade fence around the parts of the property that are near hazardous off-site conditions. And I would, certainly that applies to the, you know, locations where the hazards are like right over the property line, and if you walked around there, you've seen it. I mean, these are, it's described as, I don't remember what the word was used, you know, junk or waste that's on the surface. The reports in the DEP file characterize, characterize that stuff quite differently as waste and, you know, barrel and drum dumping grounds, and, you know, certainly not anything we want children around. So, I would hope that, you know, now that we've addressed the environmental, you know, contamination type concern, that we would give a little more close attention to that issue of physical hazards and prevent people from getting back there. And I would also go so far as to say, we don't really want to be encouraging people to be back on the Porter Estate either, where, you know, 10 or 15, 20 years ago, they put up some fencing, that's long since been torn down. It's not a safe place. The conservation land is not a safe place for people to be. We should not be encouraging them to be there. And I did actually have one more question about the contamination sampling results. At NC4, the levels are described as being trace levels, but at NC4, the lead contamination concentration, or no, I'm sorry, it's the arsenic, looking at your, the report tables. I think the arsenic concentration reported at NC4 was more than half of the reportable concentration. You know, you go 10 feet one way or the other, you might be into a reportable concentration. And I'm, but I have a question about that. Is that a part of the site where there is going to be fill? Or is what's currently the surface soil at NC4 what's going to remain the surface soil? If it's going to remain the surface soil, I would not necessarily be resting on a contamination concentration that's half of the reportable for arsenic and, you know. But if there's going to be fill there on top of what's currently there, that would maybe be a different story.
I don't have a good answer. Mr. Buckley's on here.
Would you be able to speak and give us an answer to that?
Do you think, do the buildings go right up? Yeah. I think they do. There's obviously going to be some setback. Give me a minute. With respect to the reportable concentration, we do a lot of sampling at municipal parks and things like that. You find arsenic everywhere. You know, the big number is 20 or 40 for an imminent hazard, right? That's what we look at, but it's everywhere. It's pretty ubiquitous. A lot of, you know, fumigants and a lot of things we use, lead arsenate for vegetation control, that stuff, put that, that stuff everywhere. So, we see it quite a bit.
Be that as it may, it's next to the summit casting site, and it's, and it's in the one place you sampled, it's half of the reportable, so it's, I don't rest easy knowing, you know, on the fact that there might be hazardous conditions here and a bunch of other places. But the point is, I guess, you know, the question I would just maybe leave hanging out there till you can figure out the answer is whether there is going to be fill on top of this or not. And if not, I would suggest the board might want to maybe suggest a little more sampling around NC4, because that seems to be where the surface metals were, you know, not above reportables in that one location, but at least for arsenic, it was, you know, north of 50% of it, so.
It looks right behind Buildings 1 and 2.
Isn't that where they were going to bring in fill?
That's what I thought.
I think so, but was it very close to the building? Would the fill be very close to the buildings? Because Barney here, apologies, you're not going to see this.
I'll have an answer. Water's pretty shallow there, so I would imagine maybe they are.
I think NC4 is here.
Yeah. I'll get a specific answer in a minute.
You will? Okay, he's working on it. Great. Okay, thank you.
And lastly, I would echo the suggestion that there be further, yeah, that there be an environmental professional during excavation and construction to, as was already suggested.
Yep.
So, again, thank you. That's all I have.
As far as the fencing suggestions, I mean, that's something we would consider as far as a condition, if we get to that point, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything further from you? Mr. Parker?
Unless you have any questions. If you have any questions.
Joan, you?
Eventual party today, so I'm coming with bells on, not for you, but for. Joan Galivan, Nine Cannon Forge Drive, Foxborough. I don't understand a lot of this, part of this, and I hope you can, a lot of that, all that technical information, I think it's good that they've done that, you have the information and so forth. But to me, part of what you're looking at is health and safety. That's part of what that was, to do that extra work and to supposedly get some reassurances, but I still, you know, the normal person that lives in town here always has this problem of saying, we've got the dump there, and we did it for millions of thousands of years or whatever it was, and we still have the pits and so forth. But anyway, getting to the health and safety issue, it just doesn't seem like it's the right place to put this development, the size of it and the intensity of it. Where it's located in this town is far away from everything. It's not in the character of the residential area that's there. The access is really dangerous now. So, we've got these 46 now supposedly units, and I think there are three and four, two and three bedroom units. So, you know, originally, it was brought to us as a affordable housing, we can help affordable housing. We certainly don't need that anymore. We have 200 to 250 affordable housing units going up in Walnut Street there. But, but just for the look, the idea of where this is located, it's, when we looked at the housing plan, when we were talking about this, it was a big issue in town. We had a housing production plan and so forth. And the idea was to put it close to things like a little store somewhere or somehow with near its transportation, or, and it was for over 55, it was for, you know, for their ability to access places and things also. Now, we have these 46 units.
Joan, can I stop you for a second? I'd like to concentrate on the environmental issues tonight.
So, I was going to say, they're walking, it's unsafe. The whole area is going to be unsafe that street. We've had police cars even have accidents on that street. And when you go down that street, there's no place on either side to even like balance on the side of the road. You have to be on the road. So, we've got, whether you've got families, and they, maybe they've got a little, some paths there for, for walking in the conservation, maybe that's capping, but then, then they have to walk on the road to go anywhere, to have even a walk. Then, I don't know, any number of children could be there. These are families now, two and three.
Joan, I'm going to stop you right now. Tonight, we're dealing with the environmental issues, okay? Next month, you can make your final argument.
I'll be in Florida.
Well, then, you can do it in writing if you wish.
Okay, there's one more meeting, is that what it is?
Well, we're going to talk about that in a little while. But you can certainly put anything in writing.
Okay.
But I really want to just concentrate on environmental issues.
Just environmental.
Yes.
Which I don't understand anyway, so.
Well, thank you. I think we had a pretty good explanation. Even though a lot of it is technical, I think we've had a good explanation, but thank you.
All right.
Anybody else on an environmental issue? Yes?
Kathy Vandenberg, 109 Morse. I'm not sure if this is what you mean by environmental issue, but would the bridge that's built over the river be appropriate to speak about now, or is that at another time?
I think, I think another time.
Okay.
In part because Mr. Buckley's not here, so if you had any structural questions or things that would go to his area.
Okay.
Okay?
He just responded where Unit 10 is, there's going to be a lot of fill brought in in that corner where NC4 is.
Okay.
Say how many feet, if you even have it in front.
Yeah, I thought that that's the area that he was talking about.
There'll be just a lot of fill brought in in that corner.
So, we'll, if we do, if we approve this, we'll add a condition, we need a lot of fill, right? Just a lot.
Yes. Well, we'll get specific.
Okay.
Best we can do for now.
Final chance from all of us. Any questions from Mr. Parker, from Mr. Brennan?
No, thank you.
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Dave, you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is stormwater part of this, or that's later? Okay, and one more. Snow removal, later?
Maybe. Okay, I want to make a recommendation.
Three to six feet.
Three to six feet of fill in that location?
I thought you were talking about snow. Our next hearing session is January 19th, and what I would like to recommend, and it's obviously subject to our discussion, is that on that night, we reach a consensus, consensus whether to approve or deny the application. And regardless whether the consensus is to approve or deny, we will take a formal vote at the February 16th meeting, either to grant or deny the comprehensive permit as set forth in a written decision. So, our discussion of the matter on the 19th will allow for comments from the public and from the applicant's representatives. I'm going to limit that ideally to one hour in duration concerning the application and concerning the proposed conditions and mitigation measures. So, essentially, on the 19th, a month from tonight, we deliberate and reach a consensus as to whether we should approve or deny. Judy will be drafting the report, the decision, and whether that's, whether our consensus has been to approve or deny, on the 16th of February, we then vote to accept the decision as written, which, again, may be a denial, may be an approval. So, really what I'm looking towards is, in essence, even though we would be meeting again in February on this, but really wrapping it up for all intents and purposes next month in January. So, that's just a recommendation on my part, a proposal on my part, and I'd like to see what my colleagues feel about that. If you want to make a decision tonight, we can make a decision tonight too. But I think we need, you know, some time to review all the materials, each of us to individually think about it, and then to spend some time discussing it. So, go ahead.
Okay, so, I have, I'm definitely not ready to make a decision right now.
I was sort of kidding.
Yeah, okay. And I guess, one thing I just wanted to address for anyone that's here, anyone that's listening, is anyone who sits on this board for more than a month or two, you really learn really fast. You cannot come into this thinking, and whether it's this, or whether it's like earlier, we heard an oversized garage. So, you really cannot come into, sit back here and think, I know what I'm going to do. You really don't until you've heard it all. And you can come in thinking, maybe yes, maybe no, and then as everything goes and you have all the information. So, I can't only speak for myself, but no, I'm 100% not ready to make any sort of, because I need to review all of, every single thing, because I absolutely haven't made up my mind on this yet. So, I do have a question for you. So, what you're proposing, Barney, for next month would be that we have public comment? would be that we have public comments?
Mm-hmm.
We hear from the applicant, and then you said one hour, is it one hour for the applicant, one hour for the public?
I'd like the total, 'cause I wanna give us as much time as we need to discuss.
Okay, so combined for public input and the applicant would be one hour, and the rest of the meeting would be for us to deliberate, and at the end of that deliberation, you're proposing that we vote?
Yes.
We have two hearings.
Next month?
We do.
Question.
They're not here yet, but I'm expecting them.
Okay.
One's an appeal of the building commissioner, and one's conversion of static electronic billboard.
Well, it might be a longer night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be a longer night.
I'm making a note, bring candy.
No.
Gonna need some candy.
Kurt's gonna bring some, Scott.
Okay, and so then
Not yet.
So then, if I'm understanding you, then if we were to, let, just so I understand, if we were to vote, I'm gonna ask you questions about if we were to vote yes, then I'm gonna ask you questions about if we were to vote no, just so that I'm understanding this. If we were to decide at the end of our deliberation that we're moving forward with a yes, then Judy Barrett would go forward, writing the decision
Mm-hmm.
as a yes, that would include the conditions that we've been discussing, and then we would go over to make sure that all of the conditions that we'd been talking about and all taking notes on were, say, included, and that we agreed with the verbiage.
Or, or we may decide that we want additional conditions, or that some of them that Judy has written, we don't need. But, but that's what we would be doing
Okay.
in February. In other words, Judy would give us a draft decision, that we would then, in essence, finalize at the February meeting.
Okay, and so if we were to vote no
Mm-hmm.
in January, the same would be true?
Right.
We would vote no
Obviously, there would be no conditions that would be in it, but yes.
Yes, but that would give her the time to put together the draft, and then we go over, review it, and
Yep.
to agree with that.
Mm-hmm. Now I'm gonna have to ask Judy if she's fine with that, but that's what I'm proposing.
Okay.
David?
If you'd be looking for direction from the board. Yes. If you decided to deny, it's a different decision, so it really becomes a question of the findings and the decision that the board would be making in order to justify the denial.
Sorry, Judy, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Sure. So the decision to approve is a decision that's conditional, so the conditions are laid out in the decision, and they're typically tied to different phases of the project. If it's a decision to deny, there's no conditions, it's a denial, and then the guts of the decision, if you will, are about why the board is pushing the denial. You know, you've got findings of fact, and they either err on the side of approval or denial.
Judy, from a timeframe, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would, Judy, would we have the, I guess we'll call it your draft, a week or two before the
The 19th? Yeah, I should be able
Comment back to you, you know, about anything, you know?
Yeah, I should be able to have it to you at least a week ahead of time. So I probably wouldn't give you the entire decision, but I'll give you the findings and the conditions.
Yeah.
You know, because that's really the guts of the
Yeah, not all the other we met, we do times and all these things. Okay, I think it's a good direction, Barney.
Yeah, that's something similar, Dave, to what we did with, you know, the domain.
Yep.
And I think it worked out, you know, well in that regard. I know that when we, you know, when we had our final meeting on it, you know, we did make some changes to the, to the written decision, but the individuals who were writing it certainly had the, you know, the clarification as to what was necessary to put in that draft. So I think it worked out well there, that's why I'm suggesting it again. Kurt, any thoughts?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and
No, let me finish with these guys.
Okay, when you're, yeah, okay.
Nothing additional tonight, Barney.
Okay, Lorraine, any thoughts on that?
No, I'm all set, it's fine.
Okay, now you can talk. Go ahead.
Thank you. As in past comprehensive permits, when drafting conditions, we, when working with the applicant, we certainly offer Stephanie Kiefer's experience in working with Judy, in drafting some of the conditions. I know environmental partners wrote conditions for it, but certainly a lot of those were undoable in phasing of the project, so we certainly offer Stephanie's experience with working with Judy.
Okay, thank you. I know some hands were raised. Any questions?
I was just wondering if, did you have a meeting on
So they can, no, no, could you come up there so they can hear you on the, they can't hear you unless you're in front of a mic.
Did you have a meeting that had safety as the issue?
I'm sorry?
Did you have a meeting that one of the topics was safety?
Did we have a meeting that one of the topics was safety? I mean, I think that's been an overriding concern throughout.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking that's children and around water, if there's any town or state requirements when you have a multifamily, and is open water, right? I don't know, like if you build around Jamaica Pond or something, and is that any kind of
How do I answer that? We, we, we have no control over state issues.
No.
Okay, so we can only deal with, with local regulations.
Yeah, I don't know whether that would, what it comes under, actually. I would've thought it would've had some kind of provisions when you, I don't know, I know it's private property, but it's, you know, providing multi-housing, we are either allowing it or not, or, in the long run there, so I just wondered if there was, and, you know, we did talk about the buses and things like that, about the road, but I just didn't know if we had a, that issue was, to me, it's important, and it seems like there's a lot of units here that we're concerned about, and putting where, putting it where it is, that's
Well, let me, let me say this, you, well, you said you won't be here next month, but you're entitled, obviously, to put, everybody is entitled to put something in writing to us.
Do a letter.
But we will address issues in our own deliberations.
Okay, we'll see, but get it all down.
Thank you.
So you'll have all the information. Very good.
Anything else? Kathy, yes?
So I guess I'm just wondering, no one can hear, so I'll go real close to this, why we can't talk about some of the other issues tonight, why this one can only, I know you said in the next meeting we would just do an hour, but this is a public hearing, and there's people, you know, that'll watch it on TV and, and are interested in some of the topics, and I just, I'm concerned that some of the topics won't get addressed, and we're here. And one of the, I think one of the topics, the two that I'm most concerned about is, you know, environmental partners did list that they would like a sidewalk to Morse Place, and the other is that new wave, new, not waivers, but Mr. Casparra submitted, are they waivers? I can't think of the right term.
Right.
What, some of them look like the same, so I was wondering if you could go over what was different, what was new in that list of waivers, were they, I don't think they were all new, so what, what new waivers did he add? Are those, are those things that we could discuss tonight?
No, we're not gonna discuss it tonight, we'll, we'll discuss that, let me put it this way, if we, if our consensus is to deny the application
Yeah.
those waivers are moot.
Right.
Okay? If our consensus is to approve the application, we're going to have to make a decision on the waivers themselves.
Right.
So we'll go over those.
But I guess my
And we'll let you know which ones might be different than what was initially, in the application initially.
Okay, but it, so, but it wouldn't be a value to hear from the public about, you know, which, what the concerns are about those waiver, the changes in the waivers or what the new waivers are, that's not a, something that
I mean, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to address those with us. I, I think, let me put it this way, we've been on this for six months, and I think, and I think my colleagues share it, we're, we're ready to, to make a decision, whatever that decision may be. Every thing that has been presented to us, in one fashion or another, we will consider, every comment, every concern, every question, it doesn't mean we're going to respond directly to every comment, question, or concern, but in one fashion or another, that will come under our deliberations.
Okay.
All right, now, for example, you asked about snow removal before.
Yeah.
We may not, if we approve something, that might be in the conditions, I mean, that's something that Judy will be considering as she drafts a decision, and ultimately, it's something in our view of that draft, that we will either say yes or no to, and we'll have a reason for saying yes or no to. So one way or another, we will address the concerns that have been brought to our attention. That's one reason why, and again, I was being halfway, half a seizures, one reason why I do want a month before we sit down and discuss this, because I want all of us, and believe me, I'm certainly going to do it myself, is to go through everything that we've received so far. I've got it all here, it's all on the website, I'm gonna read everything again, certainly if I have any questions about anything, we're, I'm going to raise it, and we're going to discuss it, and I'm sure that my colleagues will do the same.
Okay.
So, again, rest assured that we're going to, to do our best to address the various concerns and issues and comments. Again, it may not be directly and individually
Yeah.
but it'll all come under the, the ages of what we're going to determine.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I just think that sometimes, when the public is allowed to speak, you get a certain sense of the passion for which people have, I, I've written to you, you know my, I've written it all, you know my thoughts, but I've, I've seen members that are here come up and speak passionately about things like safety, and I know we're not going there, but I, I think that that needs to be heard, from, I think it has a different take than somebody writing something that says, I would like sidewalks, I think a personal experience is helpful, so that, that's just what I did not want to see get missed in just writing into the ZBA. You, we write them into record, but we don't read them, so some, I just
We, we read them, though.
No, you read them, but we don't read them to the public, so I, I just wanna make sure that, that the passion that some of these people feel is heard.
Okay. Yes?
Just to be clear, the next meeting?
Cause, cause they can't hear you.
Karl Vandenberg, West Street.
Just to be clear, the next meeting, all topics are on the table.
When you say all topics, meaning?
Environmental, safety, all
You, you can raise whatever objections, concerns you have.
Okay.
I have a list in my own mind of, let me put it this way, I say that a lot, I know that, I probably shouldn't. I pretty much know where the opposition to this proposal is, I mean, as, I've been waiting for this one, as Bob Dylan wrote and sang, you don't have to be a weatherman to know which way the wind blows, but I wanna give, not just you, but anybody in the public the opportunity to reiterate your concerns and questions, and maybe because of the things that you've heard over the course of the last six months, things that you haven't raised, you, you now want to raise. I wanna give everybody that opportunity, give us the opportunity to listen to you, and then address those matters, and again, it may not be we're going to address every point minutely, but we will be addressing those concerns and those issues.
Okay.
Okay?
Just so you know, some, some things are transparent from the public side, too, to what we see up here.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if you guys go back and watch your meetings after?
On occasion, I do.
Maybe for historical, or, you know,
Yeah, on occasion, I do, whether I will go back over the last six months over the course of the next month or not, I, I don't know, but on, on occasion, I do, you know, particularly if I feel that I misunderstood something, or I missed something, and I wanna clarify, have it clarified in my own mind, and I'm sure that the others do, you know, do as well.
Okay.
You know, frequently, and it has nothing to do with this matter, but frequently when I write a decision, just to clarify a point that needs to be made in the written decision, I'll go back and listen, so.
All right, I'll have some issues, concerns, to address the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Barney?
Motion, is that sort of the consensus, is that how we wanna?
I think Dave has something.
Oh.
Barney, two things, I'll just respond, I, I do watch some of the hearings as well, not all of them. The, the second comment is, I believe the new list of waivers pointed at the fact that the project has been scaled back some, and to take that into account with setback requirements and size of buildings. And that's all I have.
Okay.
What did he say?
We couldn't hear him.
We don't know what people are saying.
Hey, Dave, Dave, could, could you repeat the comment on the waivers, cause not everybody heard you clearly?
Well, I think the, make sure I'm not, not on mute, the, the new list of waivers reflects mostly on the fact that the project has been scaled back some, with less units, with less buildings, and I think that changed some of the factual part of the waivers, not so much the need for new waivers. Did that come through?
Yeah.
Just saying, I went, I went through that list quite a bit, cause I was, wanted to see if anything was being added or eliminated that didn't seem correct.
I think we added a couple, there were a couple that were added.
Based on landscaping
Yeah.
and sidewalks
Yeah.
and because of the revision in the plan, so just, they were updated.
But the basics
The basics were the same.
Were the same.
Yeah, there was nothing, they were based on the revision plans of October.
Okay, I mean, we'll go through them.
Yeah.
So, consensus wise, as far as that as the approach?
I think it's good.
Dave, you're all set with that as the approach?
Yes.
So that's the direction we'll go in then next month. So, I guess what I need now is just a motion to continue the public hearing for January 19, actually, before you do that, if the weather is frightful, I, I don't want to have that discussion with us on Zoom, I know we can do that.
Yeah.
You know, I want us here, at least us here, so if the weather, for any reason, prohibits us from meeting that night, I'm gonna have to get in touch with you, get an extension, so that we can then do it
Absolutely.
either in February, or maybe we can find a night to have a special meeting
Absolutely.
between there, okay?
I totally agree, I really would prefer to do this in person, if at all possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be much easier.
I will make every effort to be at that meeting, I think you all are aware that I have some issues that sometimes make me not particularly mobile, and that's what I ran into today.
Dave, if I have to pick you up, I'll pick you up.
Okay. Remember you said that.
I didn't mean physically pick you up, I mean, get you into my car.
I get, I get it, I get it.
Motion to continue
I move to continue the meeting until
A hearing, public hearing.
Public hearing until January 19th.
Dave's second?
Second, second.
Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So we'll see you on January 19th, joyful and holiday season for everybody, and best wishes to the new year. We have anything else?
There would be the two new hearings plus the continuing
We'll talk about it.
And so, Diana, you said, I'm sorry, you said they're not in yet, but what might they be?
One is a appeal of a building commissioner decision to do with some kind of outdoor storage on Springfield storage on Spring Street, and the other is conversion of a billboard, static to electronic.
Well, maybe we can convince the converters to wait till February. I know. I don't think, we don't have the appeal. When's the deadline, is it next week, or?
I told everybody by next Wednesday, Thursday, it is something, it's around there, anyway. Because we're closed Friday.
Appeal hasn't come in yet?
No, no, I've talked to her like four times, so she's coming in.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we all vote on this. Lorraine?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Judy, I'll be in touch.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Paige, I'll be in touch.